Okay, now which would be easier? Finish up the warrant and then do the line item?
We can do that.
Yeah, because we don't have too many to go through.
Nope. You folks have all got copies of the revised warrants. I've, I sent them to you, I believe I sent them to you last evening. They were in your agenda package, and I'm sorry, agenda boxes. Has everyone received their copies? You're all set?
Yes.
Good. So what I've done, just to give you a heads up, what I've done is I've added, in the articles that you folks have voted, for example, you voted, you added article, hmm, is under Article 27, the new Article 27 is a free cash, free cash transfer for abandoned property demolition. You folks voted at the last meeting to authorize an article for $75,000, so that article has been included. I have also added the very last article on the warrant, which is?
Thirty-two.
Article thirty-two, and that is the adoption of the stretch code pursuant to the Green Communities Act that we have applied for. I've made a few other minor changes. I did add the police and fire in under Betterment, which is the Article sixteen. You folks were looking for the police and fire to be specifically called out, and they are.
Okay, why don't we look at?
You also have some, you also have some holds, too.
Right, right. Why don't we look at the new articles first? Article twenty-seven, free cash transfer, see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $75,000 from free cash, cash for the abatement of hazardous materials, demolition, and any related cost properties deemed to be abandoned, and which pose a safety hazard to the community by the Board of Selectmen, or take any action relative thereto. Do we have a motion to place and support, or a motion to place?
I'll make a motion to place and support Article twenty-seven for abandoned properties, demolition, and transfer $75,000 from free cash.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
I'm gonna abstain.
You're standing? Okay. Four, zero, one. Okay, and then the other one is Article thirty-two.
Article thirty-two is the stretch code article?
See if the town will vote to enact Chapter eight point six zero of the Town of Sturbridge General Bylaws entitled Stretch Energy Code for the Purpose of Regulating the Design and Construction of Buildings for the Effective Use of Energy pursuant to Appendix 115 point double A of the Massachusetts Building Code seven eight zero C M R, the Stretch Code, Stretch Energy Code, including future additions, amendments, or modifications thereto, with an effective date of January first, two thousand and nineteen, copy of which is on file with the town clerk, or take any action relative thereto. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to place and support adoption of the Stretch Energy Code.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second. Any discussion?
A question.
Mary?
I don't know if you know this or not, Leon, and I intended to ask Nelson, our building inspector, but the conversation didn't go that way. Does he have a recommendation on that, being the inspector that would implement the stretch code?
Well, he works in a, he works in a town, he's worked in a town where they've adopted the stretch code. He did have some questions when, when the item first came up. We had a conference call with the folks from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and Central Mass Planning Commission about a week ago, and he seemed to have been satisfied with all the answers that were given. I didn't ask him specifically for written recommendation, but I think the last time that I spoke to him and town planners spoke to him, we were all on the same page, that he was in favor of the, of the modifications.
He is, okay.
I believe that to be true.
Right. Talking to him, he was, well, years ago, when it first came up, there was quite a difference between the present building code and the stretch code. Now, the difference, because they updated the state code, the difference is not that great, and yes, it will cost a few more dollars to anyone building a new home. Okay, is there a motion?
I have something I want to say.
Priscilla?
I know, to me, this is just, I, I think a municipality gains out of this, but I don't think any resident gains out of this, or any commercial building. The guy made it sound like there's a special inspection and that, but the building codes, from what I understand, have changed, and the, and you have a building inspector that is aware of all the changes, and I think they take care of it. And there are some limitations to this as well, and if you're building a home, and you're building it right, it's airtight. I mean, I think this is, sometimes I consider this like a resume builder for people who wanna put something out and say they created green communities, whatever the position may be. I just don't think it does anything for anybody other than add cost, and I don't see the plus to this in whatsoever. And so Sturbridge is a green community, big deal, so it costs more to build a house. I don't see any value to this whatsoever. And I talked to a couple of building builders, rather, not Chase, just to make it clear, I did not speak to him about this, but I did talk to some, one for us and whatever, and of course, they don't care either way, but there's also not a whole lot of love for it either.
Well, it does make a house better. It also makes Sturbridge eligible for grant monies from the state.
The town benefits, but the resident doesn't. Neither does the commercial business. So the resident has no benefit. The town has benefits, but not the resident and not the business. And I don't, I'm not ready to sacrifice the resident and the local small business for the town to get a few bucks out of it. It, I don't think it washes in the end. That's just my thought, that's it. I won't support this, and I will speak against it.
The, oh, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that the, the overall cost is a savings to new home buyers, and that they will, that there is some energy savings if homes are built to the stretch code as opposed to the current building code.
Such as? Can you tell me such as? Because I know that if you put in a new furnace, you can get a phenomenal rebate, okay? You put an energy efficient furnace, but there's no guarantee to anyone that these rebates are gonna be there in an indefinite period of time.
The rebate is a one, one-time deal anyhow.
Guarantee savings with the cost of electricity and oil constantly rising, and these are not fam, these are not favored for oil homes. These are favored for propane. What about the cost of propane tanks you have to install? What happens, how do we do this in Sturbridge, when we're mostly oil-based? What is it gonna do for an oil-based homes?
Now, now, the answer to your question about whether it favors oil or propane, it doesn't favor either one.
It does, if you listen to that guy last week.
He corrected, he corrected you when you stated that. It doesn't favor any, doesn't favor gas, it doesn't favor oil. It is what it is, the efficiencies of the furnaces and so forth, over, over a period of, I think in general, the difference between, the buyback period is less than five years between building a home to the stretch code versus the current building code. So within five years, the homeowner gets their money back anyhow, so there's no, and going on beyond five years, there's a plus to having a more efficient home.
How so?
How so?
Yeah, how so?
Because the, the efficiency rating, the, the efficiency rating, what used to be, the, the efficiency rating of the home is, is higher under the stretch code than it is under the.
But what does that do for the, for Joe homeowner?
It may, it may, you know, decrease the annual electric and heating budget by, you know, $300 a year, something like that, the difference between the two codes, so.
That's not a guarantee, though. That's a may.
Well.
The operative word is may. I mean, there's a lot of things we can do to any, I mean, anybody can, there's a lot of program, I mean, you know, I'm, we're not gonna solve this, but I, you know.
Yeah, but you would.
You can't guarantee it.
You have to put in additional insulation.
Mm-hmm.
You have to put in other features that, that make the home more efficient, windows, more efficient doors.
Are there any limitations to what you can put into this house? Is there anything that you can't build in this house?
What, in a stretch code house?
I know one.
Chase.
A chimney, a wood-burning chimney, a fireplace, makes it almost impossible with the stretch energy code to have one in your house and efficiently pass that HERS rating, you know, it's very, very difficult with the draft of a chimney to, to get a stretch energy house with a chimney.
Yeah, you would have to have a damper that closes very tightly.
It's almost impossible.
I don't know if it's impossible, but it's.
It costs a lot of money for a homeowner.
Of course, too many people, there aren't too many people putting fireplaces in.
It's nice for them to have that option.
Oh, yeah, no doubt about it. But I do think that, you know, we had a lot of information last week, and Nelson is in favor of it, Gene's in favor of it.
Do we know that Nelson really is in favor? I didn't, I don't recall hearing that directly, saying, "I so support this." I didn't get that.
Well, no, he didn't come out like that.
I didn't get that feeling.
But talking to him, he switched. I mean, he had questions and then.
I don't get that feeling. I don't, I really don't.
No, I've, I've talked to the building inspector several times about this.
So have I, and I don't get the feeling that he's in favor of it.
Okay, Mary?
He gave me a hold.
That's why I asked, so, just in terms of timeframe, can we place articles now and then reopen with respect to support or not?
We can, we can recommend at town meeting even.
Yeah, but I mean, do we have time before to make a recommendation on here? Because I know residents prefer it when it's not supplied at town meeting, they prefer to have it right in the warrant.
We have, our next meeting is on May seventh.
Okay, and they have still time to get our recommendation?
Of course.
Because to be honest with you, I'm kind of stuck, I, I did wanna know what Nelson felt about it, because when I left, I wasn't certain that he was in support of it, he seemed to, well, he took offense to a couple of things that were said, which was an aside, but I wasn't sure whether he found that it was a good thing or not, and I kinda would like to know our building inspector's position.
Yep, no problem, I'll add it to the.
And also, I mean, does he have any view as to the resale of homes? I'm thinking, when you resale a house that was, that the stretch code was used, maybe that's, that's an asset when they go to sell their house, especially the bigger homes, if they say, you know, where, I, I understand the cost, I understand everything Priscilla's saying, but on resale, when you sell one of these homes that passed under the stretch code, you can say, "It's a greenhouse, it's energy efficient," and I'm thinking that that could be, increase its marketability at the other end. I know it's a little more expensive to build it in the first place, but does he have a view as to whether it improves marketability at the other end?
Can I add one more thing, too? And I, I do not support this, but I want everybody to know that just because you do not support this does not mean that you are green, per se. I have a lot of faith in our building code and the updates that the building code does take, and I just feel there's so many other way to get rebates, whether it's through National Grid or savings like that, that I just think that this is, this is over and ahead, and it's gonna cost people more money than the good that it will do, so.
Okay, Mike, with that, then, do you want to withdraw your motion, and we'll, to support and just have place, and we can change?
You know, I.
Well, no, I'd like to know Nelson's position.
Yeah, I think that's, I, I think it's a fair question to ask the building inspector what, what his position is.
Okay, so you'll withdraw the support?
Yeah, in my opinion, it's a no-brainer, but it's.
And I'll withdraw my second on that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, those are the two new ones.
Are we placing, though, or are we gonna just hold it again?
No, we're gonna place, we had a motion and a second.
Oh, you did, okay, you just took off the support.
I just took it off.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So all those in favor of.
And Mary seconded it, so she, she modified it, too, so.
All those in favor of placing it? Five to nothing.
So right now, it's placed?
Traced. Okay, um.
Madam Chair, also, you have a memo from the police chief for a request for another article. He does know that the warrant is closed, however, since we've been discussing articles, I thought it would be appropriate to make sure that you folks had that.
Okay, we do, so.
We have other ones to discuss, too, right?
Please, oh, we have, oh, yes.
Other on here.
Yeah, but Leon brought this one up. Do we wanna make a motion then to reopen the warrant, so we can discuss? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, now, has everybody had a chance to read the request of the police chief for a warrant article to repeal acceptance of Mass General Law, Chapter ninety, Section twenty-two B, B to K?
Just to make sure, we're on the same page, it's, we're not repealing Mass General Law, we're repealing the town's acceptance.
Yeah, that's what I read.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, repeal acceptance.
Okay.
Oh, no, we can't repeal state laws. We could try.
I had a town that tried to do that, so.
Does anyone have any questions on this, or comments?
On his letter?
On adding it to the warrant for the annual town meeting?
I have a couple of questions. I don't have a problem adding it, but I do have questions about his memo.
Okay, yes, questions?
Okay, you know, he go, Chief Ford goes through the history of why he was the one that came forward and wanted it, right? And he said, "I thought it would be a creative solution to correcting this overflow in parking issue." And then he goes on to say that, well, now, the majority are abandoned, are, are on the property's disturbed service center, but had as abandoning this take care of the overflow in parking issue, that was his concern to start with.
Well, his concern was on the overflow that they parked on one thirty-one, if you recall, with that field of trees.
No, it's.
Right, but how do we know, what I'm saying is if we repeal this, how do we know we're not gonna get the same problem that we had, that?
There's more than that to it.
Yeah, but there's no place there. That road isn't there anymore, that little dirt road.
So he's saying there's no opportunities, so now?
There's trees.
Okay.
There's more issue, there's more issue to that, Mary, than, than just that. There's like, the town becomes like the collection agency for all this.
I didn't, no, I had read it before, I was saying if, if.
Okay, is there a motion, then, to add this and place and support it?
It's almost.
Is there a second?
Second.
More discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Okay, that was.
That will be article, what number?
Thirty-three.
Do you agree that it's taken sixteen hours of your time?
Is it gonna be Article thirty-three?
In total, between yourself.
Will that be Article thirty-three?
Yeah, I'll probably add it as Article thirty-three.
Wow. Yeah, that seems like a lot of the town's time, but I'm surprised at sixteen hours that it's that much.
You also have the two, oh, can I talk just briefly before we, we still have to talk about the field project, we still have to talk about the revolving fund articles, and then we'll do the budget. The, the field project, I think I had mentioned to you folks that our friends from the Recreation Committee will be at your next meeting to talk about the field project.
Right, but we already voted on placing it, so we don't have any more articles, so we can close the warrant.
I wanna talk about it on something else. I had asked for some information on this, I thought we were gonna vote on this again tonight, but if we're gonna reopen this, then I guess I'm gonna have to wait for the information, because I wanted to know more about where the money was coming from, how this money was spent, and I thought we would have it today, but regardless, there's another one that I wanna talk about before you close this.
Well, we already voted to place.
Okay, but there's another one that I wanna talk about, and that's the revolving funds, the Board of Health.
Yeah, that's in the special town meeting.
Well, it's in both.
It's in Article twenty-eight.
Oh, in the, yeah, adding to that.
Yep.
Yeah, but I believe, yeah, we put a hold on that one.
You did put a hold on that.
Yeah.
You haven't voted to place it, as of yet.
So why don't we go to that one, twenty-eight?
Yeah, my objection to this is that last year, the Board of Health Agent sat here, Board of Health Chairman sat here and said that we only needed a part-time Board of Health Agent, because everything was being done by this part-time person. Now we go from a part-time person that we needed to one and a half times, and if we have a brand-new health inspector that's full-time, that person can do the Title V inspections. The inspector told us she does thirty-five a year, which isn't even three a month. I don't see the need for added personnel at this point in time, and I think it's just, I think there's more to this than just this here piece. I think you have an agent, the agent's always done it, you got thirty-five a year, that's not a big deal. We have full-time inspectors that we didn't have before, so we have more help, I just don't understand how we go from needing a part-time person to all of a sudden needing full-time plus. The population didn't change that much, neither did the growth in business, not that much. So I'm totally against this, and I don't know how we do this. How do we do this at the public meeting? I mean, um.
What do you mean?
Like, I mean, if we leave this on here, because it'd be Betterment funds, I don't wanna vote against all the Betterment funds.
You can make a motion tonight to delete that.
Oh, okay, so I'll make a motion to delete the Board of Health Title V Inspector at the cost of $20,000.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let me get the, Priscilla, um.
You're, what you're doing is you're taking from Article twenty-eight.
Twenty thousand.
Yeah, twenty-eight, taking twenty thousand out of Article twenty-eight.
Well, twenty-eight's the revolving fund, right? Or am I looking at the wrong thing?
No, it is, it is.
But it's on the next page.
I don't wanna affect the entire item.
No, it's right here, it's, it's the twenty thousand revolving fund Board of Health, or am I looking at the wrong thing?
No, the last one on that list.
It's the last item there.
The last item on the list.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that one, I was like, they've always gotten twenty thousand.
No, no, not that, the last, the last one.
The last one.
For specifically for a Title V Inspector.
Could I make a suggestion? So, the, on the special town meeting is the article to create the revolving fund, maybe you should decide what you're doing on that one first, because if you place that one, or if you don't place it, then this might become a moot point.
Yeah, but this comes after.
Yeah, but.
This is gonna come after.
Barbara, it's, it's either way, we can, that way, we can close the, depending on how it goes, because.
They both go hand in hand, even though you're on.
Yeah, if we take the twenty thousand off now, we're obviously not gonna vote to.
I just wanna make sure.
Institute it, so.
I have, I have a couple of questions. We got the memo from the Board of Health with respect to why they needed more hours for the Title V. One of the things that they said is that they anticipate that the permitting process for recreational adult-use marijuana is gonna take up a lot of their time. So, I don't know, I mean, if, if, if the warrant article goes forward to ban it, then that chunk of time that they're talking about is not going to happen. So, I mean, I don't know how that plays in with this as well.
They can bring it back for special town meeting, if they need it.
No, she's.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
She's agreeing that it's just a premise that they'll be spending more time.
Yeah, one of the.
But if the ban goes, they won't.
Yeah, one of their justifications for needing this is that a lot of time was gonna be spent by the agent in this permitting process, which I guess is, does get very involved, but, I mean, that's just anticipating that it's going to move forward, you know, why not wait and see, and then come forward if, if they have to?
Right, it would be, it would be a wait and see anyways, because we don't have marijuana facilities.
Right, we don't have anything right now, may not have it for a year.
Right.
Did the amount of Title V inspections increase a lot? Is?
No, not what the agent said.
No.
The amount hasn't.
No, I mean, even, even reading the whole memo, there's a lot of things in there, this could happen, we could do this, we could, they haven't attempted to do things.
No.
Programs and stuff, you know, try that first, then tell us how much time you need, so.
What is your position, Leon? Do you, do you have one? I know they operate somewhat independently.
They are an elected board, and, and in general, I would defer, I would also say that the Mass General Law does give Boards of Health statutory authority to kind of identify their own response, their own staffing needs and their own way of, of doing things. That doesn't mean town meeting has to fund those things, but it does give Boards of Health, particularly elected Boards of Health, great leeway in determining the course of action that they feel is the most necessary in order to meet the demands of the, of the community.
Right, and they've always exercised that here. They're always coming forward with.
I mean, I feel like I wanna place it, and because they are independent, they don't need our recommendation, and perhaps not support it.
Yeah, but they need our money.
They need the money, though.
I know, but what we're suggesting is we're gonna scratch it from the revolving fund altogether, so the question can't even come up at town meeting on the revolving?
On the Title V, twenty thousand.
If you remove the article, then you, then we can't authorize payment out of a non-existent.
No, I understand, but it kind of, what I'm saying is regardless of how this board feels about it, I feel like that should weigh in as to whether or not we recommend it, but because they're an elected board exercising their own statutory authority, I think they have the right to, I don't think, I think they have the right to go to town meeting and present it to the residents, and have the residents vote on whether or not they want this Title V.
Then, I guess, my question is then, what are we doing here? Because our job is to bring to the town the most comprehensive budget, and if we don't feel that the town needs this money, why are we gonna even dangle it out there?
Well, I would say that unlike the other one, unlike the other departments, they are independent, they, they have their own independent, it's just like, regardless of how we would feel about the recreation, they're an elected board, I think they have a right to go to the people. I'm very skeptical about whether or not we need additional time for the inspector if the amount of Title V inspections haven't gone up, but I don't, I don't view it as our role to, to not even put it on the warrant when they're an elected board like that.
Well, we do have the right to do it. Okay, we do have a motion, and we do have a second to delete the, is there any more discussion?
Yeah, I, I mean, at, at the fee schedule that they gave for Title V inspections, thirty-five inspections isn't. Yeah, I mean, at the fee schedule that they gave for Title V inspections, thirty-five inspections isn't gonna come to twenty fi, twenty thousand dollars, so. Even the math doesn't work very well on. I think that, when you look at the number, I don't wanna put that on the Board of Health, I think we kind of, you know, tried to come up with a number. You'll see that a lot of them are in the twenty thousand dollar range. A lot of those, if you would be, if you would ever go back and look and see, you'd be shocked at how little. Little they actually use. Those monies are, there was no real science to the the twenty thousand. To the amount of the appropriation.
Don't say that.
No, I mean, the Board of Health did rec, did ask for that amount.
Yeah.
That is what they put forward, and in fact, I did receive an email today that I I haven't had time to deal with yet regarding whether it's actually enough money from the FinCom.
Oh, from FinCom?
Right.
I haven't seen that.
What is their position?
They haven't voted yet.
Oh, but why do they, they're questioning the twenty thousand?
Yeah, well, the liaison to the Board of Health is, so I I need to look into that tomorrow. I just got the email today, but I was preparing for tonight's meeting, so.
Oh, that's fine. Who is their liaison to the Board of Health?
Sario. But, you know, they plan to, his question was basically, they plan to up their fee schedule, and so he was questioning whether that would be sufficient. So I will look in that tomorrow. I don't know if I have the memo, but with me up here tonight, but there there were, they had provided me information as to how many inspections were being done, and they had a recommended amount, and I believe it was right around.
Are they saying that some of it is gonna be financed by increasing their own fees?
They are looking to increase all their fees.
Right, but will that help to pay for the inspector?
Right, so, well, what they're doing is they're doing a revolving fund, these fees will go into the revolving fund, and then they'll pay the the inspector. The proposal that they've put forward is to pay the inspector ninety percent of the fees collected.
Oh, ninety percent of the fees collected, okay, and the rest go, okay.
Yeah, there's no, there's no money coming out of the town's budget.
Yeah, no, I know, right, I get it, it's a revolving fund, I understand.
Right, other than there'll be no revenues going into the town budget, because those will all go now into the revolving.
Got it.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor of deleting the Title V Inspector twenty thousand? Okay, three, all those opposed. Okay, the motion carries. Okay, so you need to.
Mm-hmm.
Deduct.
So, going to the, going to Barbara's original point for the special town meeting article, you will note that there is a Article sixty-five, well, we haven't talked about the special yet. Do you wanna go back and close the town, the annual first?
Yes, because we didn't hold any others, but we do have a few. Well, we held.
You haven't taken a position on the.
Tax relief.
Excuse me. God bless you.
Oh, that's.
And we haven't taken a position on fields, which, what we placed.
Would I maybe be answering questions depending on what your questions are?
Yeah, but, okay, first of all, we can close, there's no more new articles. Okay, is there a motion to close the warrant for the annual town meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor? Okay, now, I just had a question before we do that. On Article eighteen, because I was writing the motions and everything. Did we just?
This is the original eighteen, tree, tree planting?
Tree planting, transfer funds, did we vote to place and support?
You did.
Okay, I just got the place down.
Yep, no, five to zero.
Yeah. I knew what the vote was, but, okay, there's another one, no, that was it. So, number twenty-two.
That's that annual tax rate relief article?
Yep. Yeah, Mary had raised the issue about getting different numbers.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we're supposed to get those numbers.
Yeah, I'd like, so Barbara, what we had wanted, I think the board agreed when I asked, is it's been at two fifty for a while, it seems to be our standard amount for tax relief. And I tried to find my copy, but it's somewhere in my stack of materials.
We're ready, we have the.
Oh, you have the, that three and three fifty, what it, how it alters our financial policy? Because I know under that policy, there's a range that of free, of cash reserves that we want, based on a percentage of the overall budget, I believe. And we've been tipping in, like, at one end, and I'm just wondering, will we be still clearly within our policy if we increase tax relief a little bit? 'Cause I, I would like to see us, I feel like the town keeps getting into a better and better position with our cash reserves, and I know it's our rainy day fund, et cetera. But I feel like over the years, our cash reserves have increased, but yet this two fifty of tax relief has kinda remained constant. And I feel like even as good faith, we should pass a little bit more tax relief on to the residents, and if we're able to stay within our financial policy. So, do you have, you have a figure?
I think the first question we have is how are we doing on our reserves, and Barbara is prepared to answer that.
Okay, nice.
I think the next question is really a public policy one for the board to determine, but I think that we're.
Definitely is, but I, but but it is a number thing in terms of where on that continuum we're gonna fall if we increase it by fifty or increase it by a hundred, that's kinda like a numbers answer. And then whether or not we do it as a policy, but, so I'll just.
So, as as far as your question regarding where do we stand, so our free cash balance, I try to stay higher on the free cash balance, only because we appropriate a lot of money from free cash to do a lot of things. So, reserving seven percent would be my ideal, because our policy says three to, um, three to seven percent. So I would prefer to be at the high end for that. Our stabilization fund is then seven to nine percent. And we were right at seven percent, we're gonna go, we're gonna dip a little bit below seven when we get into the fiscal nineteen budget, because we just, if you remember, at the special town meeting, we put more money into the stabilization fund, and that was to bring it back up to seven. It's gonna be at about six and a half percent going into fiscal nineteen. So again, not terrible, we're in good, we're in good shape. So, after.
And we're at seven on the free cash, is that what you're saying?
Well, that's what I'm, we're above that, but let me just explain.
Okay, where are, I, you can explain, but where are we percentage-wise?
Well, we're way above right now.
I know, but just give me the number.
I didn't actually do that, because I subtracted everything down, so.
Okay, I would like to know the number, though, at some point.
So, we were at, free cash was certified at four million, three seventy-one, four hundred.
Four million, three seventy-one, yeah, we have that.
We did a number of articles at the special town meeting, and that brought us down to four million, eleven thousand, seven twenty-three. When we go into the annual town meeting, the more articles that we are going to take out of free cash is the capital improvement plan for almost five hundred and three thousand. Tax rate relief, just, let's just use the two fifty right now, I know that's up for discussion, but two fifty.
Yeah.
The data center upgrade for the public safety complex is eighty thousand dollars. Wireless devices for the school is a hundred and fifty thousand. And then the abandoned properties demolition is seventy-five thousand. That drops our balance to two million, nine fifty-three, eight seventy-three. And at the special town.
Two million, nine fifty-three?
Eight seventy-three, yeah. And then at the special town meeting, amount to be determined, 'cause we haven't.
It keeps snowing. It's snowing, I see.
Right now, I'm estimating a hundred and fifty thousand. Hopefully, it'll be a little bit less than that, but until, until all the bills are in, and believe, I mean, we did actually have to pay people again this week for last week's snow, so we're not usually in this position at this time of year. But, so using the one, a hundred and fifty thousand, and then we have an article for unpaid bills, we don't have any right now, we hope not to, that would be minimal, that puts us at two million, eight oh three, eight seventy-three. So then, reserving out the free cash balance of the two mil, which is two million, three seventy-eight, six eleven, which puts us at that seven percent, leaves four hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars available.
And you're mad, okay, so. I understand, you're assuming all the spend articles go through and are financed, and you just did all that. But going into this year, I still wanna know, when we were at four, three, seven, one, we were considerably higher than the seven percent.
We are, we are, but.
But I just wanna know, what, were we at like ten percent, or nine percent, or? Because I, I feel like at that point, going into this year, we should have, and I know we can't go back, we should have given more, more tax relief la, last year, I mean.
No, that's the number as of July first, so tax rate had already been set.
So this is, this is.
This is opportunity right now.
Right now, we.
That's what she's saying, though, that's exactly what she's saying.
But, yeah, I guess, we are, we're gonna be able to pay for everything we want on our wish list, let's assume the residents go for it, and we're still gonna be at seven percent. So, I'm saying going into this year, we were, we were higher than seven percent, like, we were exceeding.
We will always be, because, don't forget, we use, we use free cash to fund a lot of things at the annual town meeting every year, so.
But shouldn't we have been, just conceptually understand, shouldn't we have been at seven percent going into it? Or what, or that should be added, then then I think that we need to, like, make it clear in our financial policy what we want going in, because it sounds like we want more like ten percent so that we can finance this current year's expenditure, like.
Transfers.
Right, so we really want more than seven percent.
Well, you have to remember, so.
I just feel like our cash reserves have been really, really good. And they've been lower when I first got on the board. And yet, we were giving two fifty then, like, I've never seen it dip lower in my three terms serving on the board. We've always, it's kinda like the standard amount that we put out, two fifty.
It's lower than two fifty for a while, but it's been two fifty for a while.
Well, it's been.
Quite a few years.
Several, several years. And I feel like we, we, our cash situation improves, but like, we don't pass it on. We just say, oh, good, Sturbridge is in a good financial position, but we don't pass on any additional tax relief, even in terms of good faith, that's how I feel.
I agree.
Could you correct me if if I'm wrong, but I think in simple terms, what you just said is there's a little over four hundred thousand dollars coming out of town meeting that we could apply to tax relief and still maintain seven percent free cash coming out. Is that correct?
It is, but I, I understand what you're saying, but, Mary, but you have to remember that going into, when we get, free cash is certified every year, there's so many variables in that number. So, we can't have, we want free cash to be X and maintain that number. You know, when, if we have, like, the year that I did the auction, that was unanticipated revenue that spikes your free cash. There are, there are things that happened over the course of the year. I mean, I know, like, we've had a lot of people leave, we've had police officers leave this year, that could spike the remaining budget for the police department budget, but that's one time, that goes into free cash. There's so many variables involved. You know, I, I know I've said this before, but I feel strongly that, you know, I I understand, there's two things. One is, we could definitely put more money into taxpayer relief, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do that. But I think that what what we wanna do is we wanna make sure that it's a sustainable number. Because the worst thing that you can do is put a large amount in this year, and the tax rate goes down considerably, and then next year, you don't have that same amount of money to put in, and then it spikes. Uh, because it's, it, it's just, it's, it's lowering something that you, if you, if you can't maintain it, it doesn't help. I look at, when we're able to fund, you know, the capital improvement plan, the upgrade for the public safety complex, the wireless devices for the, the Birch Elementary School, the abandoned property demolition, when we're able to fund all those things from free cash, in a way, it is taxpayer relief, because if we had to, if the tech, if the school still needed those devices at a hundred and fifty thousand, the budget would have to go up to do that, or something else would have to go down. So, you have four hundred, you have four hundred and twenty-five thousand, what's that?
The schools can pay for it, too. I mean, in all fairness, if I may, Barbara, I hear what you're saying, and I understand that. But if we were tight, that hundred and fifty could've come out of the school budget, they could've cut something else without affecting teaching. And I'm not asking to cut teachers or anything like that, I'm just saying some of the periphery, because having worked on school budgets, there's a lot of it, okay? So the hundred and fifty could've come out of there, worst-case scenario. So, if we have four hundred and twenty-five thousand, I understand you're not gonna give away all the four twenty-five, I get that. But, based on what Selectman Dowling said, and if we have these functions, if we have these potential costs, I don't know what's gonna happen to the rec fields, I kinda have an idea, but I don't know. Then you have the senior center, is there gonna be a renovation, question mark? Is the safety gonna be renovated? And then you want the taxpayer to fund that, too. Not, if we keep the tax rate too high, as it is now, okay, let's just say, and then you fund all these things like happened with the town hall, where is it gonna go? So if we can give them a year of our nice breath of fresh air, why not? So if we can give them three seventy-five or four hundred, why not? I mean, that, I'm all for the taxpayer.
I wanna go back, I think that what you're talking about is a policy issue. We're, we're telling you what we think that we can afford, and at the end of the day, you you folks get to make the decision if you wanna raise that.
I get it, but like, even coming up with the two fifty, there's some policy that already went into that, you know, it's kind of, it it's kind of, it's kind of all, it's, and also, I follow everything, but the more, let's say next year, instead of four, three, seven, one, we have five, three, seven, one, the same argument you're making can always be made. And what happens is, you look at what your free cash is, and that, the tail kinda wags a dog. That's why you have all these expenditures, because you have the free cash to pay for it. And so it's, it's always going to be like, well, if we have six million, look what we were able to to buy with it. Whereas, if we kept it a little bit more, like, I, I don't think personally, I know now the stabilization fund is is down a little bit, so, I don't know how I feel, but we're at seven percent on on the free cash, we're at the high end with the two fifty. So, this is a number question, it's not a policy question. If we went to three hundred thousand, this is what I asked last meeting, and we went to three fifty, where are we in terms of the percentage? Are we down to six, are we down to five, are we at six and a half? Like, that's what I'm asking.
Right now, our free cash balance is higher than seven percent, so there's still money, there's money.
Yeah, but do you understand what my question is? I think, well, I just wanna understand, at two hundred and fifty thousand of tax relief? Okay, and we pay for everything, and then you say we're at four twenty-five. I believe what you said at the beginning is that you like to be at the high end, and we'll be at the seven percent end with a two hundred and fifty thousand tax relief and buying everything that we wanna, yeah.
No, what what I said is, we would need to reserve out of the balance remaining, which is, after all the things on the annual and special town meetings.
Four twenty-five.
Two point eight million, for round number.
Right.
We would need to reserve out, I'm gonna say around number two point four million, because that would give us the seven percent.
Okay.
That leaves you four hundred and twenty-five thousand.
We can afford the three fifty.
Yes, you could.
Okay, then.
Uh, Mary, do you wanna make a motion?
I will, so I just wanna make sure my notes are right. So we're buying, I'm not saying buying, but the, we need everything that we need, capital improvement, et cetera. That's gonna bring us down to two point four. From the two point eight, we'll have basically four hundred thousand additional monies and still hit our target seven percent. So we could afford an extra hundred thousand in tax relief. Is that, am I?
Yeah.
Reading that correctly, okay.
You wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion that we increase Article twenty-two tax relief to three hundred and fifty thousand.
Second.
Under discussion, Madam Chair?
Yes, I was.
I just wanna reiterate what Barbara said about, you know, this may not be sustainable year after year. If 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 what we're saying is, is that we're willing to try this, for this year, you know, it is possible that if times are tough next year, or if we have an emergency, and we need to start using free cash to solve, you know, critical problems within our community, A, we might not be able to do that next year, but B, we might be finding ourselves in a, in a position where, you know, without that three hundred and fifty thousand, there, the increases in their taxes to pay for the regular business might be a larger increase than what people might be expecting.
But, I I follow Leon, but even, with all due respect, even going up a hundred thousand, we had an extra four hundred thousand, and we're still meeting our financial plan.
Understood, yep.
So I just feel like at some point, we have a financial policy for a reason, and.
So we should follow it.
We should follow it, I mean, we don't need to have an excess of it.
I agree with Mary, I think, and I, look, this is happens, this, look, we all work and whatever, you have a year, you got a little extra free cash, you know, your own, yourself. And so you do something, and you can't maybe do the year before, or the year, or the next year. I think this is the same thing. If you have a little windfall, in a sense, and you have something, you can, hey, wow, we can afford this. We haven't been able to afford. We haven't been able to afford this. You know, you've brought this up every year. We haven't been able to afford it. But if we can, why not give it back to the taxpayer? I mean, for one year, nobody's saying it's gonna be every year. I don't think you're saying that, I know I'm not saying it. Everybody's, if, but if you can give them something, why not? Why, why not, you know? Oh no, I know you're not, I'm just-
I have to throw it back to say, okay, just know that we might not be able to do-
But we, I don't think anybody here thinks, I, I don't think anybody here is delusional enough to think that it's gonna be every year.
Sustainable.
Because we have had it some years, 200, 2, in the last, she's right, in the last eight or nine years, it's been 250. But if you have a year like this, where you can give them 350, why not give it back to them? I mean, that's just how I feel too. I totally agree with her.
I, I just wanna make sure everybody understands that, we always, we wanna aim that our free cash comes in high, because then we can do the things, you know, we don't wanna have, the free cash comes in at 2.3, and that's what we need, 2.3 for our policies, and then there's nothing to spend. Because, you know, I'll, I'll go with your, you know, example on the schools, but I can tell you that I could not have found $80,000 for the upgrade that's necessary at the public safety complex for their computer system.
Or the building demolition, or the-
I'm, I'm just saying-
Right, but what I'm saying is, this year, we're able to do all of those things.
Right.
Every single one of them, and give a little more relief. Cause I think residents feel like, when do they, when do they reap the benefit of us being a lucrative town? And I do feel like, if we let this, let's say, and I don't think it will probably happen, but let's say, you know, next year, it's at 5371, or 6371, and we keep it at 250, then the amount of warrant articles that are going to want capital improve, we're gonna spend, like, let's face it, the town's gonna, the town will spend it. Um, you know, there'll be more staff, and, and it, it'll kinda, we'll, we'll spend the money. This way, if, we've definitely been at 250 and had nowhere near the free cash that we do this year. And we didn't dip it to 2 or 150, we, we held the 250, and so, I don't know.
I agree.
I agree.
Mike?
You, I just wanted to make sure you understand that if, effectively, if we, and, I'm not necessarily against this, but effectively, what we're doing, if we reduce this amount, we reduce the town's ability to generate revenue by that amount. Say if we increase it by 100,000, we won't, um, our, uh, ability to generate revenue is reduced by that amount next year, and the year after that, and the year after that. Because, the tax rate is decreased, that, which will decrease the total appropriation.
How much is it gonna de, how much, what are we talking for decrease here? What are we talking, 50 cents? Seriously, we're not talking $5 decrease.
Our financial, you know what would be helpful? At 350, I support my, the 350. But I would again, like to know, what percentage will that put us? That's just a, a number thing. Will we be, cause I wanna know at town meeting, will we be at 6.5% free cash, based on our financial policy? Will we be at 6%? I know, at 250, we're gonna be at 7 or more. And I'm asking, by giving additional tax relief by 100,000, how does it affect that percentage?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be-
Higher.
Higher than 7, because 7 was 2.3 million, we have 425-
So just give me the number when you can.
Yeah, I know.
Just give me the number.
4 cents. Every 50,000 is 4 cents.
Say that again?
Every 50,000-
Is 4 cents on the, on the tax rate? So every 100,000, is that what you said?
8 cents.
Every 50,000-
Yeah, is 4 cents. So every 50, so at 350, it's 50 cents times 7, so-
So it'll be about-
It's not a bad drop.
Yeah, no, I'm not asking, that's good, I'm not asking for the drop. I'm asking for something different.
We know.
Okay, okay.
Based on what's remaining after tonight's meeting is done.
Cause FinCom's gonna ask too.
What percentage?
I wanna, because I think we're still being very thorough.
I think every scenario, cause I didn't know what you were gonna do, but, it's gonna be slightly higher than 7. It's 2.3 million, almost 2.4 is 7%. We're gonna be slightly higher.
Okay, so maybe in writing, just cause I'm not gonna remember, you could tell us, and also tell us, if we leave it at 250, um, cause FinCom, it's their warrant article, they could put it right back to 250.
No, 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 it's not. Yes, they can, they can do it with the substitute motion.
With the substitute motion, I mean, it's the same thing.
Who would really do that?
I don't know, but I would like to know what percentage it is at 250, free cash, and what percentage it is at 350. Like, how much did we change that range in our financial policy?
We can do that.
Yeah, I just, it's, it's good ammunition.
Can we vote on the motion?
Yeah, we do have a motion in a second. All in favor of changing the number to 350,000? Okay, 5 to 0. Okay.
So that was to place and support at-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
At, at 350.
Yep.
Okay, now, any more questions, Mary?
No.
Okay, now we can take a motion to close the warrant.
Did you wanna talk about the fields, or not? Or you're just gonna put that off to your-
Well, we already voted to place it.
Okay.
So we can make a recommendation even up to town meeting night.
Um, can I, why, why you have the fields, can I ask a question on this? I don't know if it's gonna come from you, or who it's gonna come from. When, when we talk about the fields, I believe it's an, it requires an override, if I'm not right?
We'd need a dead exclusion.
What's a dead exclusion, in plain English? Is it an override?
Yes.
Okay, let's call it, let's call it what it is. Because that's what people know it as.
It's a temporary, in excess, a, a dead exclusion is a temporary, you, you have a couple on the books already here in the town.
Yes.
One for the schools, one for the buildings.
But basically, it's gonna require a vote of an override of 2.5, correct?
That's correct. There'll be a vote of, at, at the town.
Town meeting and at the election, at the ballot box, right?
Right.
Right, okay.
But it's, it's not an override. An override is permanent, and a dead exclusion-
Is for the year, or whatever.
Shouldn't go up till the debt is paid.
Okay, so that could be 10, 20 years, whatever they decide.
Whatever the-
Okay.
20 years.
Can you, um, I don't know who brings this to us, if it's you, I don't know, but, can we get the numbers to say, okay, if this passes, all right, if this has any possibility, what are we looking at for a cost factor to the average homeowner?
I sent that to, I sent that to you.
I didn't have that information.
I don't have it.
I sent you a two-page, um, it was a-
If your house is valued at, I think you put 275.
When did you send this?
Last week.
Yeah, last week, after the meeting.
I honestly don't have it.
It, it, it was a two-page, uh, info sheet, it was called Info Sheet, uh, from the Recreation Committee. We provided them the numbers on how much that was gonna cost the average taxpayer.
Can you resend that, please?
Of course.
Thank you.
Just, just since you asked the question-
Yeah.
The project would add 42 cents to the property taxes.
Project would add 42 cents?
42 cents, it's, we would be borrowing 5.7 million dollars over 20 years through the tax rate. This is an annual increase of $118 for an average resident home value of 279,755.
Mm-hmm. And that's just for the fields. That doesn't count if they decide to fix the, uh, TPW or anything like that. This, this 42 cents that gets added to their tax rate is for just the fields.
Correct. And then one, so, the project cost is 6.7 million. 5.7 will be paid through taxation, the dead exclusion. And then 1 million dollars will also be a borrowing, but that will be repaid through CPA funds.
Right, okay. And, um, Lee, I, um, all right, never mind, I'll wait for that sheet, I'll save it for the next time. Thank you Barbara for that. That's more, that's what I was kinda looking for, thanks.
Mary? I have one question on the fields too. I didn't know we were doing fields tonight. Um, and you might not have this, so I totally understand. I know that this, we were taking 1 million from the CP, um, CPA funds. Um, I know our policy is not to depend on the state match, um, with respect to paying back for any of our purchases, cause we never know what the state match is gonna be. Could the CPC have given more than the 1 million financially, not a policy question, like a financial question, and still have fallen within just what we collect as a surcharge on the taxes? Like, did they have more wiggle room, where they could've come up with more than a million?
I, I can't answer that tonight, but I know that, what, what the policy is, is that you should not have debt payments due from CPA funds that are in excess of the amount of money that you take in from the local surcharge.
Right.
And so, um, I, I would have to look how close we are, but, um-
Just out of curiosity.
We don't have a lot of room there, but this will, this borrowing will put us below where we need to be. I'd have to look that up, I don't have it.
Oh, so you're saying, even with them giving a million, we're not, we won't be able to cover the debt?
No, we will be.
We will, okay.
We're not gonna be above that number.
But you don't know if they could give like 1.5 and still make?
I don't.
Okay. If, I would be curious. Cause I would personally, you know, if the money was there, I feel like, we've made millions of dollars of purchases for open states. It would be nice to see if we had it. And I, they're being generous, but it would be nice to see the CPC give even more than 1 million for active recreation.
Mike?
I, I thought it was a borrowing of the CPC money was also, uh, part of the borrowing.
It isn't.
Yeah, it's, it's not, like, the, the, the way you were, uh, saying it, you, you implied that the cash is in the-
No, it, it, everything they've purchased is through debt. But I did, I just worded it wrong. We are committed to not depending on the state to pay the debt. We only use our local funds.
Well, that, that's the-
That's, that, that's our ideal situation.
That's the recommendation, because-
Right, we don't know what it's gonna be.
I believe, um, there was an email that went, came out a few weeks ago, and I believe the state match is, is like 11%.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's nothing.
Because the more towns adopting it, the smaller, well, they're not adding to the prior money, so.
Right.
The only good thing with us is, we were early in, so we do get that second-
Second round, right.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious if they had any, even like a half a million more to, to give. Squeeze them as much as we can.
Don't tell me, do you have any money?
Squeeze them.
So, we do have a motion to close the warrant. Can we have a vote, please? Oh, we did?
Oh, we, we had closed the wa, warrant.
No, we didn't. We did close it? I don't think we voted on it.
No, we didn't vote, because she wanted, she had a question-
Right.
On, uh, Priscilla first had a question on the fields and stuff.
Okay.
So, all those in favor of closing the annual town meeting warrant, okay. Mike?
I thought the, uh, uh, the Recreation Committee was coming before the Board of Selectmen next, next meeting, so-
Oh, I didn't get it, but thank you.
That's, I-
Thank you very much.
That's one, we, we should-
To support or not.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, but we voted to place, so.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I had it.
I got it and read it.
Yeah.
No, it was very comprehensive.
Yeah, I mean, I have questions at the hearing.
Now, we, we, um, we have been providing the Recreation Committee the answers to the questions that they've been asking us. One of the goals that you folks had set for, for us is to assist the Recreation Committee in at least getting themselves ready to get to town meeting. Barbara and I have been meeting with our friends on the Recreation Committee for, um, for some time now, just trying to make sure that, um, they have the information necessary to try to make their case to the community.
Leon, uh, when they come before us in May, can they bring the breakdown of that 6.7?
Sure.
You know, like, so much for this, so much for that. I'd like to see that, if you would?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Okay, and, um, their promotion on the fields too. They tell what feels, but are they regulation feels suitable for tournaments?
I, I don't know the answer to the question, but we will, I will have them respond to you.
Yeah, because they list all these things, but they-
Before, before we, uh, we leave the reglo, but, uh, town meeting warrant, I just had a question. The amount of $350,000 that we, uh, we've just voted to, uh, reduce the tax rate by, is that equivalent to about 28 cents? Based on your 4 cents for every-
4 cents times 7 is 20, yeah. It's about 28 cents.
About 28 cents per thousand.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted that, that number out there, because they're gonna be talking about, the, the Fields Committee's gonna be talking about raising by 42 cents, and we just voted to reduce it by 28.
Well, we voted it, but it doesn't mean the town will vote it. I mean-
Yeah.
It's all-
We, we voted to, to place and support a reduction of 28 cents.
I would be shocked if that didn't pass.
You just never know sometimes. So I don't know what Fin, you know, what FinCom may wanna stay with the 250 with a substitute motion, that's why I want the figures, I, I wanna have the figures.
They might bring a substitute motion.
Yeah, I wanna have the figures to know that we're still honoring our financial policy with-
I think we can be able, we'll be able to provide you with that. Yeah, I, I don't wanna, uh, get into the trap about talking about the tax rate, but it's, it's actually the total appropriation that we're, we're, we're doing. Because, uh, when the assessors get their new valuations and so forth, the, the rate will go up or down based on property valuations as well.
Right, but that's based on what I know right now.
Yeah, what we know right now-
Yeah, yeah. That's as of the tax rate as it sits now.
Yeah.
And assessed value that I know now.
Exactly. So you've already been assessed for whatever, so it's as of right now. I think everybody, I think people would know that. Cause we don't do the tax rate until-
Until fall.
Yeah. So, they'd get some relief.
It's right around that range.
Yeah.
It'll be right around there.
Right around there.
And I don't think we've really seen in recent years, Sturbridge, even during the, our property values really didn't go-
There's some, no, it's just-
Well, fact, during the 2008, 2009, but I'm even saying in the last four or five years.
It's gone up.
Right, no, I said the property values haven't decreased.
Some have.
Really?
Yeah, some have.
I mean, it, I, you have to have that discussion.
Yeah, no, with, yeah, I know, I know.
With the assessors, right?
That's another day.
We do have the special town meeting warrant.
Before you move off of that, I do wanna make sure that you folks are aware, uh, on Articles 9 and 10, those are our water and sewer. We're not here to necessarily have a rate, uh, discussion for water and sewer, but I think, Madam Chair, you mentioned at the last meeting, that you noticed that our revenues were down, um, on our sewer side. Um, you know, we've been very fortunate over the last several years, that our water and sewer rates have not, uh, have not moved probably in three fiscal years. Um, the water, um, rates, we think are going to be sufficient, um, at the current levels. Uh, we are projecting that in other, under Article 10, um, we are looking at, um, developing a budget that, um, that we know that we're going to need a rate increase. One of the things that Barbara and I are talking about is maybe, maybe using some of our retained earnings, um, or fund balance, I should say, uh, in sewer, to kind of offset what that increase will be. And we're gonna present this to you folks, or I'll probably present it to you folks at your next meeting, um, for further consideration. But, we are considering using some fund balance to kind of offset the-
Yeah, we've done that before, so.
Yeah, we, I'm a little reluctant to do an aggressive amount, but if we can, you know, cut that rate increase by half by using some fund balance, I think it would, uh, you know, go a long way. Is there any more that we should add on that?
Just because I'm here, and I, I think your next meeting-
Is the 7th?
And I, I won't be able to come on the 7th, cause I have a meeting that night also, but, uh, the, the budgets for both water and sewer are down. They, they are not up, they are actually down. So, fiscal '19's budget is less than 18 in both cases. What we are seeing is, uh, another decrease in consumption, water consumption. Sewer rates are based on water consumption, so we're seeing a decrease in the sewer. Um, we've had a couple of things. Uh, the Public House, uh, has a well now, where they were paying charges to us. Now they're not doing that. Uh, 420 Main Street, which is the area where the barn is.
Yeah, okay.
They have an irrigation well. If you drive by it, after-
They have a sign, which is a smart idea.
So no one's complaining when they're-
No one calls.
Right, when there's a water dam, right? Um, and then, if you remember, the issue with the condos over here, regarding the sewer. All those things have affected consumption and our rates. And then, we also have, as Shane and Greg have reported to you a number of times, the issue with the zinc levels. And so we are not taking outside septicage at this point in time. And that has had a considerable effect on our revenue estimates. So, based on those things, uh, the rate right now for sewer is $9.82. If we were not to do anything with fund balance, it would need to go $10.77, which is a 9.6% increase, 95 cents. As Leon said, uh, you know, we are prepared to make a recommendation for using some fund balance. But, what needs to be, if our budget had gone up, I would probably not be as, you know, it went up, so that makes sense that the rate goes up, right? But because our budget is actually- But because our budget is actually declining, and we're still looking at a rate increase, I'm not sure the zinc will be resolved so that we'll be able to take back in outside septicage. And then, if consumption continues to either be level or continues to decline, which this is the third year, I have three years of worth of estimates here, and it's declined in those three years, and I'm sure if I go back, it's declined even further than that, we would not be able to sustain. If you remember, those of you who've been on the board, when we were trying to supplement the, keep the rate low because of all our debt. Saying, you know, we can do this for a few years, but then, as our fund balance declines, so we wouldn't, while we may be able to do this for a year or two, if the consumption continues to go down, we will be in the same situation that we were in before.
Is that because of all the, and I don't know if this is connected, but of all the water bans, does that feed into that?
Well, people are being smarter in the water bans.
I think they're being smarter, but I think they're also forced into it.
Yeah.
In Sturbridge, I mean.
Because our rates are high, so I think that that.
I think they are conservative, but I'm gonna, let me ask you, and it's, it's a hypothetical. If the water ban wasn't there, do you think that there would be more consumption? Would more people be apt to water their lawns more, more than just when it says 5 o'clock?
I don't know.
I'm just curious. I mean, I would tend to think so.
I think Shane would be the best person to answer that question.
My guess would be that they would.
Yeah, I think so too.
I mean, they may be a little bit more conservative because of the rates, but if you can't do it, you can't do it because you're not allowed to do it, you know? Okay, just curious.
So, the Public House used to be on town services, and now they're not anymore?
They, they're partially.
They're no longer on water? They have their own well?
I think their drinking water is still town water.
Right, I, I think it was for their irrigation.
Irrigation.
Oh. So, C businesses are gonna stay.
That's a big chunk.
Well, I mean, I know.
Shane and Greg would have a better handle.
This is just discussion for another night, but when we, when we had the increased waste, when we increased our treatment center's capacity, tie and bond, we envisioned other neighborhoods coming on town services, and the increase in the new neighborhoods was going to help pay for this treatment center. What has happened is some neighborhoods definitely came on, and then we kind of, there's been a hiatus, we kind of just stopped. And now we have not as many neighborhoods paying for this treatment center than the way it was voted in at town meeting. And I'd have to look at the treat, I'd have to look at the study, but I think at the time, it cost like $500,000 study, and I remember being on FinCom at the time, and they broke down all the different neighborhoods, and they talked about which neighborhoods we're gonna get on, you know, services.
Yes, still service district, we still have that.
Yeah, we still have it, and I think what's happened is the neighborhoods that are on are like shouldering it all, shouldering the whole burden, and the more businesses, you know, seek other alternatives, it's probably gonna get worse.
Well, I mean, we definitely thought as our debt started to decline, you know, the higher rates would start to decline with it, and now we've added a different layer on top of it because of the zinc and then the reduced.
The outside. Okay, so, we do now have the special town meeting.
So, I just have, I, I want to just point out what I did. Article 63 and 64, as Barbara had alluded to earlier, we don't have an exact figure as of today, so I'm prepared to present Article 63 and 64, which is the snow and ice deficit and unpaid bills of a fiscal year, simply as a sum of money. In the motion that we would make, it would be the, to actually tie it out to the penny. Unfortunately, today, we don't know what those numbers are, and I think it's certainly easy enough to write the articles the way that I have, basically allowing us to make the motion at town meeting dictating what those numbers are, actual, actual numbers are when we get to the June 4th town meeting. Article 65 ties in with the discussion that you folks had earlier this evening, and my guess would be that the same vote that was passed for the annual town meeting is gonna be replicated in the special.
Make a motion to.
Women, so, go ahead. Sorry, I said Mary.
That's okay. Make a motion to eliminate or delete Article 65 from the special town meeting.
So moved. I mean, second. It's only, not even eight. Any discussion?
I would, yeah, I would just like to say, even though I may not be supporting this article, I think the town meeting should have the opportunity to vote for it, but.
Well, I'm sure that.
And that's, that was Mary Darling's point.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm sure that the Board of Health won't be too pleased with us, and they'll put in a substitute motion.
Substitute motion anyhow, so it'll get there.
Oh, no.
They can't.
Not if you folks remove the article, it won't.
That's true, it's not there. That's true.
They can't, they can't, they can't.
There won't be any substitute motions on this.
That works for me.
There's nothing to amend.
Yeah.
It's true.
It's not there.
Well, they'll still be mad at us.
That's all right, they'll get over it.
They'll get over it.
Next year, next year might be a better year.
I used to know town meeting better than that. Okay, all in favor of deleting Article 65 or not placing it? All those opposed? Okay, three to two. Okay, now, do you want a motion to place 63 and 64?
Your folks already did that.
Well, we did.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I think you did.
The 63 that we did.
You don't, I don't know that you did the unpaid bill article, because I told you at the last meeting that I was going to be adding it, but I didn't add it.
Why don't I make a motion to place Article 64?
Yeah.
63 has already been placed?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, you made the motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll make it, the motion again, just to, is there a second?
64, is there a second?
I'll second it.
For discussion, I, I heard him only say place.
Oh, place and support.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I meant to say place and support, because if we do have any unpaid bills.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Five to nothing.
If we have any unpaid bills.
Okay, is there a motion then to close the warrant for the special town meeting of June 4th?
Motion to close this special town meeting warrant?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Now, we have line item budget.
So, in your, you all have your budget books, I'm hoping?
Yes. Okay, now, Chase, how we usually do it is we go through each line, and if somebody wants to hold it, just say hold, and then when we get to the end, we vote on all those we didn't hold.
Okay.
So, before we do this, I do want to reiterate that I have no problem with the money, kind of, but I do still, and other people I know have felt, and a few other members of the Board of Selectmen, would still like to have the department head salary shown, and then all the other salaries shown.
In the book.
In the book.
In the lines like they, like they were before.
Yeah, like they used to be.
Yeah.
Up until last year.
So, I anticipated this question. I.
Have an explanation, it's only six pages. No, you've explained.
No, it's bigger than six pages.
You've explained it before, but I'm talking about transparency for.
So, in the document that I've just given to you, I, I started to look at how, because I know that we've asked this question in the past, and if you go to the second page of the document that I just gave you, I want to share with you my findings on, oh, Barbara, I didn't give you one of these. I wanted to share with you my findings, I didn't mean to throw that at you, on how other towns in our area do their line item budget voted at town meeting. And one of the questions that I've asked is, do you have a separate line item for department heads? Do you have separate line items for your individual employees? And do you have a separate line item for supplies and services broken out or if they are consolidated? And I wanted to share with you that the way that we're doing it right now, that we started doing it last year, is by and large the way that most communities do this. The fact is, is that separately voting the department manager's salary is not necessarily an issue of transparency. We can address transparency in probably 10,000 different ways, from separate reports or whatever. The question that I, the thing that I'm most concerned about and have been from the get-go is how it's actually voted at town meeting. What we have right now is when you have department managers' line items separately voted, we have no ability, Barbara and I, the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen, we have no ability to move things around within the budget. So, for example, this past year, we had, I gave you the example of the senior center. We were without a senior center director for a period of time. I asked some of the staff there to work extra hours. The only way that I would have been able to make that happen the prior year would be for me to either go to the Finance Committee for a reserve fund transfer, or go to a special town meeting and seek to have money as we appropriated from the department manager's line item to salaries and wages for, for the other employees. Now, you'll see from the examples that I've given you, and I've given you actually the printed copy of the warrants that are, the budgets that are voted on by the variety of different communities. You, you really put yourself in a really awkward position by separately voting every single line item as a separate line item, because it gives you no flexibility. I was willing to even go one step further this year and vote to have supplies and services all voted as one. For example, if you find that you're gonna be over on supplies this year, right now, you actually have to go back to town meeting, go for a reserve fund transfer or something, where if you voted all other expenses as one line item, it gives you as a department manager a little bit of flexibility to be more conservative in one area if your expenses in another area suddenly have ballooned unnecessarily. So, I, you know, I'm looking for more flexibility in what is actually voted. How you get there, I'm willing to have a discussion with you folks about. I think it's, my concern is just what is voted at, at town meeting, is my concern.
Leon, I don't disagree with this, you know, if you need more money here and there, but we do have remedies for that. Reserve fund transfer, special town meeting, or if we're close to the annual and special in it, we do have mechanisms, and it really doesn't happen that often. It happens, but not that often. But I do believe we have since we've, probably even before my time, we've done it this way, and people like it this way. People, last year, I can't, I don't know how many people asked me, well, you know, I don't know what the department head makes. Well, yes, you can go and read the accountants thing, but not everybody reads that. They used to, when they're at town meetings, seeing this and that. And even when I questioned the percentages, I had an error on the rec one, but even in the percentages, the department heads get merit pay too. So, you know, when you're saying you didn't add that in on what they're, like if somebody went up 4.6%, that wasn't taken into account, the money they would get for merit pay, which would raise that. So, people like to see that, people like more detail than not, but that's just my spiel. Priscilla?
I agree. A lot of people have raised that issue, and especially with the percentages what they are this year, I think there'd be a lot of discussion, and I think the people have the right to know. I, I do think they have the right to know, so when they ask these questions, why, I think they deserve the answer. I mean, they're paying the bills. Reality is, they're paying the bills. You know, those people who are gonna sit there and vote on this are the ones that are paying all this. And I, I think, you know, I had mixed feelings, and I know I talked to Barbara, and I understand where you're coming from, because it does give flexibility. I, I get that. But I think it's, it has to be a more, maybe a slower process to get people to understand it that way, and, and maybe talk about it at some point to the people and say, this is what we're looking to do maybe next year, kind of thing, and, and work into it.
Well, I, I mean, with all due respect, and, and I don't discount the fact that you folks have gotten calls from, from the citizens about this issue. I, I also got a phone call, a phone call last year about this issue. One person contacted me about the, about the department head salaries, and I explained that in the, in the, in the documentation, we actually, that we're going to town meeting with, we actually have an appendix at town meeting that explains and answers that question, and that person, when I explained that to them, was like, oh, perfectly fine with me. So.
But, go ahead, but that was the same person that called other people, and that person didn't express satisfaction with me.
He expressed satisfaction with me.
Depends on who they talked to.
But also, even at the, at the back of the book, it had said, you could look all the department head salaries up, but what they were, what the argument was, okay, so how is this different than last year? Nobody had that answer. I mean, who carries this?
Well, again, like I said, I can, as far as transparency goes, there's a thousand things that we could do. If we could, if you wanted a different table, I could include a different table. If you wanted a report on the town's website, I can do that too.
The one with the weight, with the salaries.
Do you want to do that for every, every employee of the town, by the way, or just the department heads?
I think the department heads, because that's what we did before, was the department heads, and I think this, this report that we got showing the increases, that should be page one, and not, and not at the back of the book. That should be front and center, that these are the department heads, these are their salaries, this is what they made, and this is what is proposed for them, and let the people handle it. I mean, if you do it that way, then you can leave it as it is like this, but I think they need to see where it's coming from.
I mean, I'm, I, I want you to reiterate. I'm happy as far as the transparency thing to do, to issue any reports that you're looking for. My only concern about this whole issue is how this is voted at town meeting, so that we're not unduly handcuffed during the operations of the, of the town during the fiscal year. If you folks want to tell me what format you want it to look like, I'm happy to do that. My only concern from the get-go was how this is voted, and, and, and other than that, I'm as flexible as can be.
Because if the line items are voted separately, there's no movement from one line item to another.
There's some.
Accent going for a.
A reserve fund transfer.
Right, no, I get that from FinCom.
And then I'm, I'm also at the mercy of the FinCom, you know, and, and they seem to like the new methodology. It gives them a little bit of, you know, relief from having to meet to, to carry out these, these ministerial votes.
Yeah, it's, it seems like the, the way you're proposing to budget, it's kind of in the spirit of the Municipal Modernization Act, making the government more efficient, but I understand Priscilla and Mary's concern about transparency for department head salaries. So, I, you know, I would agree with Priscilla that if that table of department head salaries, I'm, I'm not concerned one way or another about that, but, and I have never gotten a question about it, and I, you know, I recently knocked on a lot of doors, and not one question about that. I had a lot of other questions, but that wasn't the main topic of conversation. So, I don't know if it's a big issue, but I have no problem with publishing department head salaries.
I know it's an issue.
Yeah.
Well, I would also add, I know there, there must be some people that, that are concerned about it, because it's been brought up here several times.
Priscilla?
The question comes like, and I'm not gonna pick a department, because I don't want to single out a department, but a department, and it says, let's say, $175,000, okay? And that's in that salaries category. I've had people say to me, are you kidding me? This department head blank XYZ makes 175? No, 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 that includes the help, that includes this. Well, then why doesn't it say though? And this is the, this is why I'm saying, I think we need to teach our public, not that they're not smart enough to, to, to learn this, but if you've done something one way, and now you're changing it, I think the public needs to be made aware and educated to it.
Well, I will say, let me defend myself a little bit. Last year, we had plenty of conversation about this issue. There's no question that we had conversations about this issue last year.
But we didn't know the blowback.
I want to reiterate, I don't know that there was a lot of blowback. We had town meeting in June of last year. Not one question about this on town meeting floor, not one.
No, but we got plenty after that.
I'm, I'm telling you, I only got one question about it, and nobody at the time of town meeting raised any questions about it. So, I, I just want to say, I think that we did do our best of trying to explain what we were trying to do. were trying to do last year, and look, if the board wants me to do something different this year, I'll abide by the will of the board. I just think, you know, from a perspective of, you know, of doing things more efficiently, this is what I'm recommending that we do.
I just have a question. I personally have not had any people, unlike Mary and Priscilla, ask me about the fact that we're not having a different line item for department heads. But for those of you who talk to other residents with a concern, asking the question, why is it the department head, the salary they want to know as opposed to?
Because that's where they're always at.
Okay, but as opposed to like?
The hourly worker?
Yeah, like, is there a perception that they're making too much money?
No, no, no. Because they've always seen department head from 2010, 11, 12, 13, and so on.
Now they don't anymore.
And now they're not seeing it anymore. That's the issue. It's not, they're not looking at the labor and say, okay, how much does DPW person or the police officer or whatever make? They're not looking at it that way. They're looking at it as, why, you know, why aren't we listening to? Yeah, the department head, what they consider, and this is per resident, the higher-end people.
Okay.
Okay, that's what they're looking at. And that was what was explained to me. And I mean, I've had enough that I have to sit back and, you know, now you've got to listen. I mean, you hear it from a couple of people, but when you start hearing it from a lot more, then you really have to, you have to listen a little harder, you know, and at least, at least address it, if nothing else.
Because, I mean, I've explained your point of view to, I-
Yeah, me too.
There's about at least 10 to 15 people that work, but it's still, well, I like to know. I don't mind everybody else, just one lump sum, you know, but the department heads should be out there.
I just add one more thing, and this was never really my intention or my concern from this in the least bit. But, you know, there's so, the highest paid employee of this town is not listed anywhere in the budget.
Superintendent of schools.
Not listed anywhere. No other principals.
It's in the annual report.
That's exactly my answer back to the Board of Selectmen.
Because everybody knows you can't touch the schools.
In the annual report, that's a calendar year, whereas this is fiscal year.
So, ask me to do one for fiscal year, because it's a simple mathematical-
But that's because the public feels they don't have a say in the schools. The schools are pretty independent. It's not like, it's not like, the public can go to a budget meeting and say, why is the superintendent making X, Y, Z, or why is that principal making X, Y, or Z? But you know what? In the end result, they have no control on it. They have no control, because if they vote down the school budget, they're shutting down everything. That's my point. So, whereas with us, it's different. We handle the town, not the schools. And I think that's the reason you don't get the same pushback, the schools don't get the same pushback we get.
What are you doing, Palmer? I'm just curious because we've got a, you're still a select person, right?
No, they may differ from the government.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Department of Finance is all one budget. Department of Public Safety is all one budget.
All one budget.
Department of Human Resources, all one budget.
Oh, got it.
So, they have a huge flexibility. I agree with Leon. I think that there's many examples of how this has benefited. I mean, another example, I mean, he gave one. Another is, you know, we've had, and I think I already mentioned this earlier, the police department has had some individuals leave that as, until they replace them, the money's sitting in the salaries and wages line, but he's had to expend his overtime money. If we go back to the way it was, those are all individual accounts. The way it is this year, I have the flexibility to, you know, he doesn't have to worry that his overtime budget's going to go over because he's got the money sitting in salaries and wages and I can make an adjustment internally. You know, we're still monitoring everything. I don't hear that, you're not really questioning what you're doing on this side, it's the transparency thing. I would, with all due respect, just ask that, you know, allow us to put, you know, if you want it at the front of the book, it's the Finance Committee's book, so we'd have to talk, I don't know, I mean, it makes sense in the appendix, but even if we put some type of, you know, notation in the front of their book where they write their whole overview of what they felt happened during the course of the year and refer people back to the appendix of the book where they can get a detailed explanation of department head salaries, if that's the one that you're concerned with. I mean, I can do a report that has fiscal 18 budget, fiscal 19, the difference in dollars, the percentage increase, the same type of formula that used to be in here, and that gives them the same information. And if they're referred to that to reference, that gives us the flexibility we're looking for in kind of years with your transparency issue.
We could do a report for every municipal employee in the town that says the exact same thing.
People aren't interested in that.
No.
People are interested in department heads and everything, and we had you do that last year. You did put a little-
Right, I didn't do it per, while I'm hearing Priscilla's saying they want to see the difference.
Right. I have had people say to me that if they don't see it this year, they're going to hold every line item that has salaries. And I don't think anybody sitting here really wants that. I really, seriously don't. And I think that's what we're trying to maybe avoid in another way. I mean, I think if this, I truly believe this, if this sheet that we got-
That was my sheet.
Okay, well, whoever put this together, okay? If this sheet were put front and center, or at least part of this line item budget, the resident can see it. Whereas in the back of the book, what's, it doesn't do much. It's just based, again, I'm just telling you, when I heard two people say to me that they were going, and these are two people I know that do go, that they were going to hold every line item that said salary. And I'm like, oh, God, we're going, you know, you think about it, you got how many-
What are they going to hold it for?
They're going to hold it to ask the question, how much did they make? How much are they making? Spread, break this down for me. Okay, you've got $200,000 here for this department. I want to know the department head. I want to know how much the secretaries are making. And it, the person wanted it, everything broken down. Now, you do that times all of these departments. You figure what that's going to do to time?
Right, but we never report it broken down by individual-
I understand that, but because you're not breaking it down by department head, now they want it broken down. So, to me, if you, if we did it the way we used to do it, I think it would cut a lot of slack, until you can bring it to people gradually, I don't want to use the word educate, but gradually show them the process and how you want to change it and why. And I do think it works if we talk to people.
Why can't we do that this year? I don't understand.
Well, I think we have a budget to get to. I think Priscilla and I are probably the only two on the board that feel strongly about it, but-
Well, I just haven't had anybody approach me and say that they don't like the way it's being done. I can appreciate wanting to see the salaries, and it does sound, you know, with all due respect, that if there's going to be hold, it's because they want to see what the department head's making. I'm thinking there is a perception probably with some employees that they're paid a lot. Otherwise, I don't know why they would be so interested, you know? I haven't had it come to me.
One person, I had a couple of people who said to me recently that, you know, what, are you giving them raises that you don't want to show? And I'm like, no, you know, you don't understand. And I tried to explain the process, like you had, you know, you sat and talked and all, and they said, oh, yeah, no, 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 when you start putting, I couldn't, these couple of people, I just could not bring them to understand it, so I let it go.
Yeah, Leon's suggestion of putting this in, would that satisfy the residents that have approached?
But not in the back of the book. Not in the back of the book. In the front, in where these line items are, this needs to be right there, front and center, in order to satisfy, for me, to say to the residents, it's there. Otherwise, I'm not going to defend this to a resident. I can't. If the residents call the shots here.
All right, maybe not in the back, maybe not first page, but-
In the line items with-
I think that's fair. I can do a whole explanation page with explains the whole process and everything.
But in the line items, like, I don't want them to have to see 15 pages to get to what this is.
I get it completely.
You know what I'm saying? So, like, we have how many pages, 10, 15 pages of line items? It should be somewhere in those 10 to 15 pages, this sheet, like this, with the percentages should be showing.
I have no objection to that.
Then we're in the same place.
Is, is the detailed budget the final one that the Finance Committee recommends? Is that available online or anything like that?
Yes.
So, the information's out there.
The entire Finance Committee handbook-
Not everybody is computer savvy.
Well, they can ask for it and they can get a hard copy, I'm sure.
Well, they get a hard copy at town meeting.
They get it anyway.
The detail?
Yes.
The Finance Committee book that-
No, I'm asking about the detailed budget, the green tab that we have in our book.
Oh, 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 oh.
They're not going to read, they're not going to read that. It's still not going to resolve it.
Yeah, they get the budget, not the detail behind it.
I think that if, I think that what you're proposing, putting that towards the front of the book, if we can do that and see how that plays out, because that still gives us the flexibility, it gives the information that you're concerned with, but it gives us the flexibility to be able to manage day to day with the money that we've been allocating. No one's getting any more than town meeting votes, and I just think, I mean, we want to be efficient.
Right, but we also want to be transparent and-
No, I will, I will agree that last year, I don't know how I missed the steps and all that last year because it didn't hit me until we did the budget. But then, when you go through, and I mean, it's like totally different, and like I say, even these percentages are off based on the fact that, you know, merit pay.
Well, merit pay is an anticipated thing. It's not necessarily, it's not a guarantee.
Oh, no, but Leon, give me a break.
Are we going to discuss this at all? These percentages?
Yeah, we, oh, no.
No?
No, I didn't.
If you want to, I am, I'm open to having a discussion about anything.
Just wanted to get to the, well, if we want to just pass over salaries and do all the other lines and then see what time it is, if you want to discuss that, it's up to you.
Later, we can do it later.
I'm just going to, this isn't for tonight, but since we're talking about this, I think what we have to have a vision for too is, I know we have steps now for the, for the department heads, but I don't think there's a clear, I don't, I don't think there's a clear picture of how an elected official goes about getting a salary adjustment, you know, and maybe we need a bylaw at some point that spells out elected officials go direct, I don't know, go directly to town meeting with their proposal, et cetera. Because, you know, just looking at this, you know, we come to like the town clerk, for example, percentage change, 2.5 percent. Now, that person, I should say that position because it's got nothing to do with who's in it, that position is not going to have these steps because it's an elected-
Not necessarily.
Well, no, I know, but right now, right now, that person doesn't. Right now, that position is not part of this step program, right?
Right, because it's elected.
Because it's elected, I think I'm stating a fact.
I did create steps because we have a pay range for every position, and there's a pay range for town clerk as well.
Okay, but I mean, I think that we need to spell out how exactly an elected official goes about getting a step increase, you know, in terms of, you know, do they submit it just to the FinCom? Do they come to the Board of Selectmen? I mean, we don't have-
Actually, Mass General Law actually dictates how elected officials' salaries work.
Because I know Lorraine used to have that question as well, and she went right to FinCom and she went right to town meeting. And I think perhaps something like that, oh, that's spelled out by Mass Law.
Mass General Law dictates that elected official salaries have to be set by town meeting.
Okay.
So, you may have seen in the past, now, not while I was here, but you may have seen that the town clerk may have gone to town meeting to ask for an increase in the salary.
That's the only way we're in town. But, so, so they really don't have steps. Every time they'd want a step, they'd have to go to town meeting and-
Yeah, but it is the salary range.
Yeah, the creation of steps is only a math issue. It's what is the minimum set for the position? What's the maximum set for the position? Divide by nine, you get 10 steps.
And you go to town meeting each time with your request?
Well, I, I think with this particular case, as I recall, we left that person's salary at the salary it was for the prior person, as I recall.
Okay.
So, that's why, she, she'd only been in the position for a year.
Right.
But she, I think, was already at, I think, the equivalent of step three. So, if you went by a true step and grade system, she's probably making above what her grade would be or her step would be under normal circumstances. But I would never move anyone back. I don't set their salaries for an elected official.
So, the process is you go to town meeting every time? Like, that person doesn't go to FinCom or us?
But I think theoretically, if she had gotten those years of service to push her to the next step, I think that my recommended budget would include a step increase for the town clerk, and it would be mentioned-
Oh, you do make, because that's not how it used to be. There has been no recommend-
Because no department heads ever got raises, that was the problem.
So, you'd make, no, I got it. So, you'd make the recommendation-
And it keeps moving.
For a step, and it would get voted, it would be in the budget. I just think we need to spell out how an elected person-
If you go back to the warrant, I don't want to go backwards, but if you go backwards to the warrant, to Article eight.
Eight is the line.
You'll see that the article reads as follows, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of money as being necessary to pay the town charges, blah, 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 and vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elected officials. So, that's actually in the warrant, it's in the warrant article already. By voting the budget, you are actually setting the salary for the elected officials.
I, I understand-
Sometimes actually have it as a separate article.
But when that person wants a raise, okay, like Lorraine got a, and she deservedly so, she was way behind, I guess I, I want to know, it's spelled out by statute how they go about doing it?
Town meeting sets the salaries, but-
So, she went to FinCom and she really didn't even have to.
But the budget, you remember, is mine, so the budget can be recommended with an increase for the town clerk, and moving forward, I don't see a reason why I wouldn't do that. I have no ill will towards the clerk and I think that-
Oh, no, I know you don't.
Because the same problem that exists for the town clerk existed for all the department heads that we were trying to fix. There was no way to move from the minimum of the pay scale to the maximum of the pay scale under the previous scenario. And you had department heads who had worked for the town for five, six, seven years who were still at the beginning of the pay scale because there was no other way of moving from minimum to maximum.
Got it. Okay, can we answer my question?
As a matter of fact, even town administrator's salary, that's set by the Board of Selectmen.
Right, no, I know, there was just some glaring town administrator, town clerk.
Board of Selectmen actually voted on the number, but, okay, thank you. Enough said, so we won't vote salaries until, you want to, well, didn't you want to discuss something?
Okay, so the people won't be, even though they'll see this, they won't be voting on this?
No, they're going to vote, like I said when I started, I have no problem with the monies, I just have problems with the way it's set up.
Well, they can, I disagree, they can hold the line item.
Not this one.
No, no, hold on, they can, I know all the salaries are together, department head and everybody else, I understand. They can still hold that line item and suggest a different amount. Let's say they didn't want to give the department head a step increase.
Right.
They can still, say it's set at like, you know, 200,000.
They can hold salaries and say, I want to know what?
And have, make it 190. Basically, they just have to do the math and subtract the raise. Am I wrong?
No, you're right.
Yeah, so they just hold the whole line item.
But this has to be in a place where they're going to see it prior to voting on this.
The budget is posted on the town's website, it's posted at the town clerk's office.
I understand all that, but you still have residents who are not computer savvy.
I will make the FinCom aware of your concerns.
Thank you, yes. I know, people, even, you know, even though we put things on-
They don't all do it.
The town's website, I mean, we've had people in here, other meetings posted. Yes, the agenda's there and everything. Okay, so everyone has their book, okay. Let's see. Board of Selectmen, line item number one, $1,350, purchase of services. Other charges, $2,050. Okay, line item number three, under town administrator, personnel costs, two, oh, we're going to, we're not going to do personnel costs. Line-
Are we saying that we're not going to discuss personnel costs? Because otherwise, we'll have to go and do that at your next meeting.
Is it okay if that goes in the book and we do the personnel costs? Okay, personnel costs, $206,207. Purchase of services, $6,500. Okay, personnel costs, $206,270, purchase of services, $6,500, supplies, $2850, other charges, $6,600, matching grant funds, $20,000. Line number eight, under Finance Committee, personnel costs, $3,468. Line number nine, purchase of services, $3,400. Line 10, other charges, 200. Town Accountant, line 11, personnel costs, $86,550. Line 12, purchase of services, $2,850. Line 13, supplies, $675. Line 14, other charges, $325. Okay, Board of Assessors, line 15, personnel costs, $104,794. Line 16, purchase of services, $29,650. Line 17, supplies, $1,700. Line 18, other charges, $1,380. Finance Director, line 19, personnel costs, $229,425. Line 20, purchase of services, $11,475. Line 21, supplies, $7,375. Line 22, other charges, $1,575. Line 23, Town Council, purchase of services, $100,000. Information Technology, line 24, personnel costs, $70,000. Purchase of Services, $72,980. Supplies, $10,200. Line 27, Capital Outlay, $37,000.
Can we go back to IT?
Sure.
No, it's okay.
Sorry, I had to get up for a second.
We need to amend, I'm sorry, it's purchase of services?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. By the tune of $1,800 additional.
So, it'd be 74,780, is that our line?
Okay.
Do you want to know why?
Yes.
I'm waiting, you tell us.
I thought you were moving on.
No, no.
Um, it is for.
The maintenance agreement.
Thank you, the maintenance agreement.
Across the street expires in August.
We didn't have that in our original budget, and my mind wasn't working when you asked me that question.
Okay, Town Clerk, line item 28, $96,786. Line 29, purchase of services, $826. Line 30, supplies, $1,400. Line 31, other charges, $1,000. Election and Registrations, line 32, $14,300. Line 33, purchase of services, $13,732. Line 34, supplies, $1,800. Conservation Commission, line 35, personnel costs, $74,623. Line 36, purchase of services, $6,068. Line 37, supplies, $1,600. Line 38, other charges, $600. Town Planner, line 39, personnel costs, $124,028. Line 40, purchase of services, $39,145. Line 41, supplies, $3,400. Line 42, Intergovernmental, $2,590. Forty, line 43, other charges, $938. Zoning Board of Appeals, line 44, purchase of services, $500. Line 45, supplies, $350. Line 46, other charges, $90. Economic Development, line 47, purchase of services, $200. Line 48, supplies, $1,200. Line 49, other charges, $200. Facilities, personnel costs, line 50, $71,057.
We need to amend that to $83,007. Eighty-three, zero, five, seven.
Explanation?
Yeah, explanation, yeah.
We, we, in our first year doing this, we had somebody working part-time, and we're finding that it's just not working as a part-time position. We needed to, we need to bring that to a full-time position, because quite frankly, we're unable to attract, as we were last time, a, a crop of good candidates for the position. And we oftentimes find that we're, we're trying to have somebody respond to emergencies in off-hours, and we lose the hours during the week, because it's a part-time hourly employee, that, to be able to get the regular work done. You know, a department head, if we bring it to a department head level, with department head hours, we have the ability to say, look, when you have an emergency at night, you've still got to come in and do your thing. The same way that Barbara and I are here for a meeting, that facilities person has to be on the clock 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And my, my position is, is that we need to add the extra hours for the position in order to get the, get what we're hoping to have accomplished with that position.
That's the hours, but how did it, what did you think at 71,000? How many hours were you thinking?
It's forty.
No, the 71,000 also includes the custodian, the two custodians.
It's not a forty, seventy-one thousand.
Oh, okay, so the 83,000 includes the two custodians?
Yeah.
So, it's 52,000 for the facilities.
Fifty-two?
Fifty-two.
As opposed to the, I think it was.
Forty.
Forty thousand.
See, that's how we get confused when it's not broken.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, we can answer that question pretty easily.
Yeah, but other people aren't here. Right.
I'll settle on that one. Okay, line 51, purchase of services, $200. Line 52, supplies, $1,000. Line 53, other charges, $300. Town Hall, line 54, purchase of services, $40,330. Line 55, supplies, $2,200. Center Office Building, line 56, purchase of services, $30,980. Line 57, supplies, $1,200.
Mary, can you hold one second?
Sure.
Please, this sheet's gonna have to be corrected then, too, because this shows Facilities Manager, FY 19, at 40,000.
Yeah, I'll, I'll update.
We will have a true doubt version of that. We have to correct, I think, one of the lines as well, which was incorrect.
I corrected it, but.
Oh, okay, I didn't see.
In my messy writing.
I didn't see that, but.
Okay, because that's one I just, when you said 52, and I looked at this, and this is saying 40.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure everything matches out.
Okay.
What's being proposed?
Okay. Next page, Senior Center Building. Line 58, purchase of services, $19,817. Line 59, supplies, $2,000. Joshua Hyde Library Building, line 60, purchase of services, $21,895. Line 61, supplies, $1,550. Safety Complex, line 62, purchase.
We need to adjust that one, too.
Okay.
Eighty-three thousand, eighty-three five.
We need to add $10,000 for a feasibility study for, for public safety. We were thinking we might have to do it as a separate warrant article. Instead of having you folks add an extra article for just $10,000, we're gonna build it into the operating budget, we'll make a note of it for next year's budget, that it doesn't get built into our base budget for next year.
Okay.
This is for the communications. We need to bring in a professional to come in and do a communications study of our coverage areas.
Okay.
Utilizing the information we have from our regional dispatch, which will be a good start, we believe we can bring somebody in for about $10,000 or less, to have an analysis done of our coverage areas, and to make recommendations for us. You remember, I know Priscilla has done a good job of mentioning some of the capital projects that we have coming up, probably none greater than the communications upgrades that we need with our dispatch and, and public safety building. So, it's gonna start with this, with this study that we need to bring.
Okay, it's just a feasibility study for that one aspect.
Just for that one thing.
It's not one based on the needs assessment for the building.
The needs, no, the needs assessment for the public safety building, I expect, they keep telling me I should be getting it any time, but it's not for a building upgrade, it's an equipment upgrade or service upgrade.
They, that was one of the discussions we had when we had the regional dispatch, when we said, no.
Oh, yes.
We were told straight out, you're gonna have to face that piece, yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah, but I just wanted, because people hear feasibility, and they might think it's.
No, not the building, not a building issue.
Okay, lines 63, supplies, $13,200. Line, Nursery School, line 64, purchase of services, $2,000. Line 65, A Brookfield Road, purchase of services, $1,300.
Can I ask a question? On nursery school, why did it go down? It went down from 5,300 to 2,000.
It was raised in 18 for a specific purchase.
Purpose?
Or something that was done. That was probably the monies that we added at the special town meeting for the painting of the building, Barbara?
Yes, 4,300 for repairs, and now it's dropped back to 1,000.
So, what we're doing, this goes back to what we were talking about earlier, our base budget will reflect what the actual cost is.
Thank you.
Good question.
Okay, line 66, Police Department, personnel costs, $2,367,341. Line 67, purchase of services, $93,710. Line 68, supplies, $64,575. Line 69, other charges, $6,610. Seven, line 70, Capital Outlay, $111,100. Fire Department, line 71, personnel costs, $1,245,262. Line 72, purchase of services, $98,103. Line 73, supplies, $77,000. Line 74, other charges, $6,700. Building Inspector, line 75, personnel costs, $112,761. Line 76, purchase of surface, service, services, $1,620. Line 77, supplies, $1,600.
Should've brought a bottle of water.
I have water.
Oh, okay.
It's just my asthma at the evening. Okay, line 79, Sailor of Weights and Measures, purchase of services, $5,350. Inspectors, Electrical and Plumbing, line 80, personnel costs, $55,000. Okay, then I know it's probably just a typo, but a few of these things have zeros in the space.
I fixed them going forward.
Yeah. I didn't, I figured it was nothing.
I'm not quite sure, what, I'm not sure what happened, but they appeared this year. I typed them, they just appeared.
Well, that's like when you text, spell check, puts other things in. Okay, line 81, purchase of services, $300. Line 82, supplies, $500. Eighty, line 83, other charges, $2,465. Tree Warden, line 84, personnel costs, $2,639. Line 85, purchase of services, $16,131. Line 86, supplies, $675. Line 87, other charges, $1,125. Education, line 88, Burgess, Burgess Elementary School, $11,341,746. Line 89, Tantascra Town Share, $6,890,586. Line 90, Tantascra Transportation Assessment, $131,083. Line 91, Chata School Transportation, $6,000. Public Works, line 92, personnel costs, $849,969. Line 93, purchase of services, $61,239. Line 94, supplies, $81,140. Line 95, other charges, $1,430. Town Road Maintenance, line 96, private road maintenance, $6,000. Snow and Ice Removal, line 97, personnel costs, $43,300.
Forty-seven?
Oh, 47,300. Line 98, purchase of services, $70,000. Line 99, supplies, $100,000. Land slash Recycling Center, line 100, personnel costs, $109,938. Line 101, purchase of services, $154,160. Okay, Board of Health, line 103, personnel costs, $81,250. Line 104, purchase of services, $4,471. Line 105, supplies, $2,625. Line 106, other charges, $1,815. Community Health, line 107, community health care, total, $4,000. Inspections and Testing, line 108, personnel costs, $46,119. Council on Aging, line 109, personnel costs, $126,844. Line 110, purchase of services, $1,950. Line 111, supplies, $1,700. Line 112, other charges, $2,400. Okay, Veteran Services, line 114, personnel costs, $5,279. Line 115, purchase of services, $250. Line 116, supplies, $575. Line 117, American Legion, $1,600. Line 120, benefit, Veterans Benefits, $50,000. Joshua Hyde Library Operations, line 121, personnel costs, $356,304. Line 122, purchase of services, $23,580. Line 123, supplies, $3,500. Line 124, Library Materials, $96,533. Line 125, other charges, $2,565. Recreation Personnel Costs, line 126, $59,724. Line 127, purchase of services, $10,45. Line 128, supplies, $2,680. Line 128, supplies $2,680. Line 129, Team Sports, $7,500. Line 130, other charges $210. Trails Committee, line 131, purchase of services $1,000. Line 132, other charges $1,140. Historical Commission, line 133, purchase of services $800. Line 134, supplies $200. Line 135, other charges $200. Debt Service Principal, line 136, Burgess Elementary Project, $918,000. Line 137, Town Hall, $176,000. Debt Service Interest, line 138, short-term interest $10,000. Line 139, Burgess Elementary School, $371,269. Line 140, Town Hall, $67,240.
We talked about debt exclusions, these are, those are the ones on the books currently.
Okay, Unclassified, line 141, Group Insurance, $1,804. Line 142, Unemployment, $25,000. Line 143, Worcester Retirement System, $1,275,676. Line 144, Medicare Tax, $222,500. Line 145, Streetlights, $60,000. Line 146, Energy Consulting, $4,000. Line 147, Town Audit, $30,000. Line 150, Legal Fees, $15,000. Line 151, Tax Title, $7,500. Line 152, Town Report, $3,000. Line 153, Insurance Blanket, $350,000. Line 154, Insurance Deductible, $5,000. Line 155, Reserve Fund, $154,000.
Can we go back to 154? I noticed there were no questions about it, I just want to make sure that you folks understand what we're doing from now on is we're putting aside a little bit of money just in case we have any claims during the year. Previously, if we had a claim during the year, we would have no line item in which to take the deductible from, or to pay off little tiny piddly things instead of filing as an insurance claim. This $5,000, we probably won't have to spend, hopefully we don't have to spend any money out of it, however, it does help us in the event that we have a deductible that we have to pay. Just want to make sure you folks understood what that was.
Okay, Central Purchasing, line 156, Telephone, $30,000. Line 157, Postage, $21,000. Line 158, Gasoline, $150,000. Line 159, Water Sewer, $11,000. Line 160, Copias, $6,100. Line 161, Slate Roof Maintenance Plan, $10,000. Line 162, Fleet Vehicles, $1,500. Line 165, EZ Pass, $1,200. Line 166, Electricity, $100,000. New grand total, you redo?
We will, we probably have it.
Barbara, I guess this is probably for you. This sheet that has these percentages, are they reflected in that variance percentage? Let me just pick one. Hang on a second. Let me just pick one, huh?
You can pick me if you want.
No, no, I'll pick one, I just got to find one, I'm in the facility, I'm in the wrong area. Hang on a second. Pick the Town Planner, how's that? On page, there is no page, it's around line 39.
Yep.
Okay, see where it says personnel costs and then it says 0.7%? Maybe you can, just for my understanding, okay?
Why is it so low?
Right, because the Town Planner shows an increase of 5.9%.
Right, so, but then, don't forget, we had a retirement in that department, and so the new person came in substantially lower than the person who retired, and so that's the net between the differences.
So that percentage is the difference between the year prior?
Correct.
Okay, so, I think, yeah, this is the piece that can be deceiving. This is the piece that can be deceiving to the public. It looks like a 0.7% increase in personnel costs that people won't understand, and they're going to think that people aren't getting raises or whatever. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, but they'll, but when we put the department head sheet in that you want, then they'll see.
And I'm just thinking even this, not only department heads, but also for the secretaries, or ancillary help.
Right, so I mean, we have the same thing, we have some department heads who, you know, we have new department heads this year who will cut, who came in substantially lower.
At less money, right.
So same thing, it doesn't mean they're not getting an increase.
Right, I'm just playing devil's advocate to that percentage. You know, because I look at it and I know it's from the year before, but my point being that somebody looking at this may look at it as, wow, no raises, 0.7%? And not realize it's from the prior year.
I think it's difficult to show every, capture every single scenario, so I mean, I think if, you know, if people have specific questions, they're more than, I'm more than happy to talk to them.
But average, they don't, they're not going to do it.
Joe Average doesn't.
No, they don't. They don't have the time or whatever, you know.
But I can also address those type of things on how we vote for you.
We done?
No, you have to vote.
We have to vote on the budget? Is there a motion to approve the line item budget?
We'll place and support.
Well, we have to approve it and then.
Okay, you're going to do it as two votes?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to support, to approve the line item budget. As amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Okay. Okay, now, this is strange, we probably shouldn't have closed the warrant.
You're right.
That's okay, doesn't take two minutes, is there a motion?
Motion to.
I'm sorry, you don't have to reopen the warrant, because you're just making a motion whether it's, you've already.
Yeah, but we.
Oh, you haven't placed it.
We have to open it to place and support.
Yeah, we haven't placed it.
I'm sorry.
Why do we close it every time? I'm just curious, when we don't have to, until the, until we're a lot closer to town meeting.
Because actually, we have dates in our general bylaws on when it should be closed.
Should be closed.
It should be closed at the beginning of April. Special Town Meeting should be closed.
The Chair is correct, yeah, we have things in our, in our charter.
Our budget. A motion to reopen the warrant for the purpose of placing and supporting.
Article eight.
Article eight, the budget.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion, all in favor? Okay, motion to close the warrant.
So move. Oh, did we vote to place?
No, you need to vote first.
Yeah.
We just opened it.
We opened it.
We need to reopen the warrant.
Oh, didn't we? No, we voted, the motion was to reopen the warrant and place.
Oh, I didn't know. I thought you said in order to place and support, which is kind of different.
You guys need a scorecard.
We did two and one.
I only heard the one, so that's good, I'm glad you clarified.
Okay, corrected.
So, we did it.
So we opened it and placed and supported the article, all in one vote.
Yes, okay.
I guess.
Yes, we did.
And you voted it.
Yes, we voted it.
Now you want to close the warrant. Motion to close the warrant.
Second. Any discussion?
It gets old, it gets late.
Yeah, well, it would have been earlier except for, later the Saturday budget meeting, that's.
Do you want to entertain?
Saturday's good. I think that Saturday's important.
Do you want to entertain me for a moment?
Yes, well, Leon says, do you want to entertain me for a moment? Entertain him? Well, entertain can be two ways, it means, do we want to listen to him?
Oh, I thought he wanted us to sing or dance or.
Set the timer.
It'll be a moment, okay.
That's a better.
Actually, by sheer hands, did any of you happen to catch my presentation to the Finance Committee?
I had a date.
It's okay, no blame and no dispersions cast.
I did not.
I did want to share with the Board of Selectmen, my conversation with the Finance Committee. After the Saturday meeting, they, I found it necessary to have a brief conversation with them about revenues. We very rarely spend any time talking about revenues on the town side of government. If you could all go to your pink section, it's called Five-Year Forecast, I promise not to keep you more than just a few minutes. I just want to point out to you, the, one of the big problems that our town is facing, and has been facing for a few years now, and that is the excess levy capacity, which is the ability for us to tax to the maximum, has been decreasing over the last several years. Where we used to have, if you want to go, I know it's, the pages aren't numbered, but in that same section, probably 30 pages to the, to, you know, at the end, it starts off with the word summary at the top. I just want to point out that our excess levy capacity has been, I don't want to use the word plummeting, but it has been deteriorating over the last several years, meaning some of our expenditures are rising more than our revenues. Revenue projections are quite simple, actually Barbara does a fine job and has for many years doing five-year and 10-year projections on things like revenues and expenditures, so on and so forth. The problem that we have is, we know what our, we know what our property taxes are going to be, if you look at our, that page that says summary at the top, we kind of always kind of know, new growth aside, what our revenues are going to be when it comes to our largest revenue source. Of our 32-plus million dollar budget that you folks have just recommended, 24 million of that comes from our property taxes, by business, residential, so on and so forth. You add to that our local receipts, that's the amount of monies that we take in for building permits and fines and fees and excise and those types of things. On an annual basis, that's relatively flat, all right? Also, DOR doesn't really allow us to aggressively over-project what we're using, what we're going to be getting in local receipts, and nothing has been flatter since, except state receipts, which is basically all of our local aid that comes to the town. And I just want you to see that at the bottom of the page, on that page, you'll see that we, if we don't see something dramatically happen in the next several years, we're going to be starting to look at eliminating our excess levy capacity, and in 2022, we may actually have a deficit there. What does that mean? Well, quite frankly, what that means is, we either need to reduce our expenditures, or we need to increase our revenues. I'll speak as plain as I possibly can. Now granted, that 585 number, that's at the end of 2019, is going to be offset by a recent decision by the House Ways and Means Budget to give us a little bit of a boost by $40,000, but I think that we've also, now we're going to use free cash for that $75,000, so it won't affect that excess. So you can add about 40 grand to that 585, basically, you know, putting that 2022, is it too high? I promise, we're going to be out of here in 30 seconds. I just want to put this on your radar screens, I did bring this to the Finance Committee, just as a friendly reminder that, you know, I have been, you know, people oftentimes question why I don't include everything that is submitted to me in the proposed operating budgets for personnel or projects that they would like to do. I try to be very frugal when it comes to adding new programs or adding new services, because I'm very cognizant about that number at the very bottom right-hand corner under 2022 on that summary page, because we do have to be very cognizant. Things like adding new police officers, adding new firefighters, adding new this, adding new that, all of those things, without having the override votes to take, to account for those, puts us in a very, very, very difficult position moving forward. I promised I wouldn't be more than a few minutes, and I'm keeping my promise. I'm happy to have a longer conversation, and another date if you wish, about this issue, but I think that from now on, and Barbara and I and the Chairman of the Finance Committee talked about it after my meeting with them a couple weeks ago, I'm going to start every Saturday meeting from now on, talking about revenues first before we start talking about expenditures, because I think it's important to have that frame of reference when we are talking about what we might want to be adding to the draft budget at that point. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I just had a question about this table, this is what I was trying to get at, I didn't explain it very clearly, but the, in fiscal 2019, the bottom line, the excess levy capacity was projected to be 585,000. We just increased the free cash to offset tax rate, so that bottom line.
No, it won't, no, no, those are two separate things. Free cash is a, is a, is a reserves, for lack of a better word. That's not, that's not the excess levy capacity. Excess levy capacity is the ability to tax to the maximum.
But isn't that subtracted out of the, to get the bottom line?
It actually, it would, it would make that number, so if you go up, see how it says Budget Surplus Deficit, 385, then the 250 added, and then it was 585, so now it'll be 685. You added 100,000.
We had, we added 180,000, that's added or subtracted?
You added 100, you made the.
We added $100,000.
Yep, so that now makes that 585, 685, but then it's going to, we added stuff to the budget that's not reflected in this, so that will be subtracted.
Okay.
And then we already know, like, the state receipts number is $40,000 higher than I put the budget together because we have House Ways and Means number.
And who knows, it may be amended again by the Senate, and it might be amended again when the Conference Committee gets together, you know.
Yeah, I mean, this all is in flux until the time that we set the tax rate, to be perfectly honest with you, because even the numbers that I put forward as local revenue estimates, I adjust those all the way up to September when we're setting the tax rate, because when I have a, you know, a picture of the whole fiscal year, whereas I only have six months or less when I'm putting the budget together, so.
So Chase, because I know this is probably overwhelming to you, but, you know, we end up having to put our crystal balls in front of us and project what our revenues are going to be 18 months from the time we start putting together the budget, 18 months in the future, so it is relatively a guessing game. That's why we tend to be very conservative on not only revenues, but we tend to be conservative on the expenditures as well, because if you miss by a percentage the wrong way on either side, we have a gigantic budget deficit that we're not allowed to fix next year's budget until we fix the current year's budget.
Okay.
All right, I'm done, I'm sorry.
Is there a motion? To adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you, Barbara.
Leon or Barbara, can you send me another copy of our fiscal policy, because I couldn't find mine at home?
Sure, it's also online, too, but, yeah.
Oh, it is, it's just.